Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. We have a quorum and we'll get going. First thing we would like to start out with is our pledge and our prayer. We'll start out with the prayer being given to us by Soraya Toon, who's on our student council, and then our student council mayor Rebecca Napoli is in the pledge. We'll go to that point. Just come up here to the podium.
Our dear Holy Father, we're grateful for this day. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have to meet together as a city council and address our city, and we're grateful for this beautiful country which we live in and for the leaders of it. Please bless them with strength and help them to seek guidance from thee. And please help us to be able to get through what we need to get through tonight and help us to address the issues that need to be addressed. And we love thee and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, ye men. Everyone, please rise.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do we have any comments or anything? Mark, did you want to go over some of the guidelines?
Last city council, we discussed the changes, or change on the parks guidelines. We changed the date from April to August. And Dave suggested that the timeframe for the applicants to reply be changed from two weeks to a month, or thirty days, I can't remember which. And those are the only two changes. And it was our actual experience that brought those suggestions out. Questions?
Okay. Do they have any other comments or anything on the consent agenda? Or do we have a motion? Mayor, I'll make the motion. We approve the consent agenda. It is outlawed to include any remarks. By Mark. Second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, which approves, which includes the August 16th council meeting, the August 29th council meeting, the amendments to the park guidelines. Do we have any other comments? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
This is a question.
Well, let's go to the next one. And well, next thing is the public forum. We'll open up the public forum, so now you can come up to the microphone, state your name, and you can ask a question.
Well, I think you could answer it with a yes or no.
Well, we gotta do this on the tape, otherwise it's a public meeting.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at, whether it's a public meeting or whether it's a Pace and City Council meeting.
It's both.
Supposed to be a planning meeting for the Ashley Development, eh?
Well, yeah, it's on the agenda.
That's one of the issues we're discussing.
Yeah, that's one of the items on the agenda.
Okay, and then I'll go ahead and ask my question then.
Do you want to wait until the time when we talk about that?
Either way.
That would be best if we waited till then. And then we'll be right in the middle of it and everybody will be in line with it.
May I? In our agenda meeting, we did discuss that.
Oh.
That might be.
Yeah.
So that may be a.
That may be one that we might table. We're gonna talk with council on that, so let's see what we're gonna do there first. Let's go ahead. Does anybody else on the public forum come up to the?
Hi. I've never done this before.
Just state your name and where you're from and whatever.
My name is Erin Mecklenburg, and I actually live in El Cretz, not in Payson. But I wanted, I'm seeking approval for a project that I want to build in Memorial Park. I want to build a little pantry that will be stocked with food that I will stock and that I will have all the expenses for building and stocking. I just want to build a little cabinet or cupboard cemented into the ground that people can come and go and leave and take whatever they want. I would take responsibility for keeping it stocked. I've talked to friends of mine and they've all said, yes, we'll help you with this. Anyway, I just need permission to do it.
Okay, does that need to be on the council, on the agenda?
Yeah, I think when it was talked, Mark Hyland of the Parks said that this.
Yeah, I know him.
We said, you come to the public forum, at least tell me what your thought is. We would have to do some detail and.
And I don't have a ton of details because I wanted to start with getting permission. So I do have, I printed off like some plans of what I wanted to do. It's just small, little cupboard kind of thing. But like I said, I don't have a ton of details because I wanted to start with.
We can't give any actual, other than if you're not on the agenda, we can't make a decision and say yea or nay until you're on the dis- on the agenda. And then we can make the motion and do it.
Okay.
So I would say, does anybody on council have an objection or going on the agenda and talking about it, or do you want to?
Agenda's neither agenda.
No, on the next one. It'd have to be the next one.
My objection to it is being on the next agenda.
One of the issues that Mark took attendance because that would need to be monitored somewhat, food stuff, we have a food pantry in town. We have a couple of them, the Catholic Church and Agafe. So that might be an issue that could be a concern to monitor that. I mean, it's a great, it's a great thought to have some food, have people that can win and take and put in there, but it would be monitored that well. And so there's.
Yeah, I can see liability issues that would probably come up.
And I thought of that, and I did some research online, and there is a Good Samaritan law that covers things like that. Like if you give food to a homeless person and then they get sick. I did bring it with me. I had looked it up online, but I didn't print out the information about it. So there is that, but I understand that could be an issue, so.
We could get your stuff from Erin and we could look and see if you want to put on the agenda. If only we discussed what we can do.
I'd probably say, if you got all of that, go with the staff and make sure you have all of that in the presentation or get it into the packets for the council to read through all of that. That's what we really need.
Okay.
And I would, I think everybody'd be good with that.
Okay, and then it could be on the next one.
Then it could be on the next one.
Okay.
Yeah, so work with Dave and Mark on that.
Okay.
And get that on.
Okay, thanks so much.
Okay, thanks. All right. Anybody else on the public forum? Go ahead and close the public forum, and we'll go to staff reports.
Mayor, council, just a couple of quick updates. I know that we've talked before about that house that got a little water in it with that big rainstorm just here on Fifth West. We talked to a couple at an engineering firm and kind of, we had some ideas to just look to fix that intersection, but then we kind of looked at, in our master plan for our storm grade, it showed putting a pond actually on the school property right there. So Monday afternoon, we're gonna actually drill some holes and see what kind of soil is in there and then work with the school district to see if we can make that work. We have, they want it underground rather than a big basin, so that's a little more expensive, but that's an option we're gonna look at. And then if that works, we probably move in that direction and come back with a proposal once we know more about what the cost will be to see how you want to move forward there. But that's kind of what we're looking at, just so you kind of know what we are in addressing that and try to see the best way to tackle that, not just kind of band-aid it and shove the water farther down the road, so. And then just the next one is Brent talked to the Highline Canal today, and they will shut the irrigation water off on the 29th. So, you know, we might make it through the 30th or the 1st before it's drained, but pretty much the water will be off at the end of the month. So we're gonna put it in the newsletter, so just to let you know that's when it'll go off. So if you have any questions.
Hopefully it's still not ninety degrees.
Yeah. We can always hope, but once that water goes off, we're pretty much done because we can't sustain the city without it, so we won't have an option, so.
Okay.
Mayor, city council, a few things tonight, just to report on our calls over the last month. We had thirteen hundred and sixty-three calls for service, a hundred and six arrests, one hundred and ninety-four offenses, a hundred and forty-four citations, which resulted in a hundred and eighty-nine violations, two DRS, two hundred and thirty-one traffic stops, and thirty traffic accidents. So pretty busy this last month. We just like to thank all the departments that helped us out over the weekend. It was pretty busy and it was, we're pretty much on a mental hold for the most part, but we do appreciate the extra help that mainly the parks and roads guys gave us and keeping traffic at bay, so thank them.
Question? Thank you, thank you. Any other staff?
Hey, Mayor, council, I just want to thank you and city employees and also citizens, of course, for support with Sam and Supper and also Onion Days. From starting with the concerts, working with the hospital, to correlating each event and making sure everything runs smoothly. Just lots of volunteers. Just want to say thank you for everyone, for all their help they did. So I thought it was pretty successful, so.
Fantastic. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Mike?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to thank the staff and particularly for Onion Days. I know there's a lot of hard work that goes into that event, and both Onion Days and Sam and Supper, I thought were very well done this year. Very good events. I know the PCT production of the Addams Family for five years has been very well received. I thought it was very good, so that's a real good ace in the hole. And one thing I found out today is the car show. They raised six thousand dollars total to go to scholarships for Payson students. And so that's also a very excellent event that I think was very well done. So just wanted to again thank the staff for everything that they do and all of you for supporting Onion Days like you do, being out there. That's all.
Yeah, same thing. I hope everybody out there had a good time at Onion Days. Hopefully we saw all of you there. I saw a lot of you there. It was a fantastic event from Addams Family, car show, carnival, even though draining the mayor's pocket and taking his grandkids to rides. It was just a great event, and I enjoyed seeing so many citizen participants. And I really appreciate our staff. They put in a lot of time. Janine puts in a lot of work, a lot of extra hours, and a lot of times that goes unseen. But I was really pleased to see the staff walking around smiling, being willing to help out in the parks and clean up trash. And we had some great talent on Saturday at the park. It was a great event. So I appreciate all that our city staff does. It was a great event.
That's good. May I bid?
I want to thank like they did, the staff, for all the work that they put in. I went to the Addams Family on Friday night and loved it, but as I was sitting there, I could hear the pop, pop, pop of the fireworks. And I'm not gonna say how many years, but that is the first fireworks that I've missed my whole life, and I about started bawling in there because I missed them and I heard that they were so good. So I want to thank all of you and especially Janine. I want to apologize to Janine for Doug and I because.
Sorry. Sorry.
Because we threw candy and.
Oh, back up. I got off the float after two blocks and walked the rest of the way.
I didn't.
I'll have you know.
I didn't, and we apologize for that. I kept telling the kids, don't come out, move back, and then I threw them candy.
Oh, if I get a fine, Linda, I'd know where to sit.
Okay. I'll pay it.
I want to pay no, I didn't do it this year.
Me and Doug will pay it, not me. Doug and I.
I paid two blocks of the money.
No, no, no. I'm, he's his age and I'm my age, so I don't care that he walked. Anyway.
Does that mean you pay more?
No.
Oh.
It's fifty-fifty. I picked him up and gave him a ride there, so. All right, anyway, I want to thank all of you for supporting Payson City and coming to all of the events. It was a fun weekend, and I want to thank all of you.
Right?
I echo the same thing on Onion Days. It's a great event. And I just marvel at the staff. I mean, they work all week and then come and work the whole weekend and then come back to work. So I just thank you very much. And also all the other volunteers that we have. I hope that we show appreciation to all the volunteers we have. This, what makes a great city is volunteers. The other couple of things, one is, I don't know if you noticed this, but in the Memorial Park, there's a couple of dead big pine trees that need to come down, Dave, in Memorial Park. And if you need a place to take the wood, I'll take it off your hands. And then the golf tournament that we're having this coming Wednesday, just showing that Pace is open for business. We have eighteen teams signed up so far, from government officials to local businesses, to people that build homes. And so it's turned out to be a pretty good event. And I'd just like to know, we have one hole that's gonna be sponsored by the council and the mayor. I just wondered who would be available. It's gonna be from like seven-thirty to probably one o'clock on that Wednesday, so. Linda's gonna be there, so she can drive around to greet people. Mike?
We're there.
Okay, and Doug, you probably need to check your schedule.
Oh, hi. I'm teaching. I can't be there.
Okay.
I may have a conflict. I'll be with you afterward and stay over with you.
Okay. So anyway, we're excited about that event.
Plus, I may add a couple more teams.
Oh, great, great. Yeah, we got room for teams, so. So just to show off Pace and show that we're here and we want to have a good economic development. Last thing I have is Uvu Cameron Martin here about a month ago. He said he's hoping that they close on that property by the end of August. End of August has come. I contacted him and he said there are just a couple of minor things that are working on the hope that they'd be done in a couple of weeks, if not sooner. So that's still in the process, so. You know, that's all. Thank you.
Think of some of that still is hanging on a certain decision. So again, the weekend went great. A lot of things went on. One thing I'd like to, the emergency services personnel done a great job. We had everything from fires to ladies passing out down there and lost kids, everything else. I would like Brad and Dave, if you could get a list of all of the communities and the agencies that helped us out, will you write a letter up? And I will sign it and send it to each one of the mayors as a personal thank you to each one or the county commissioner. And I think we had the county over there, didn't we, helping us? Or did they? Sheriff's Office?
We had a sheriff.
So any of them that helped us, I think we probably ought to give them a thank you and at least acknowledgement helped us out. I noticed most of the nights, Nefi come in and they were patrolling and went on in the park, and so I know they helped us out a lot, say to Santa Quinn. So we do appreciate that because without them guys, that would cost us a lot of money over time, a lot of man-hours, and I know we're stretched pretty thin. Again, volunteers that come out and help out. People have no idea how much that saves the city and helps us out. And not only that, it brings people together and helps us bond and be a community, so. Also, Sam and Supper, I just got a letter in the mail today. It was from Matthew Holland, president of the Uvu. Says, please forgive me for my belated nature of this acknowledgement of my appreciation for your kind invitation to attend this Pace and Sam and Supper on August 4th. I spent the summer at a university in Oxford, London, as a senior associate, and I am just only recently retired. I regret that I was not able to attend the supper, but I sincerely hope it was a festive occasion enjoyed by all. So anyways, I know we've had a couple of them that responded back that we've invited, and that went well. I think we didn't have any problems there. I know that the few city functions that's been going around in this end of the county the past year haven't went as smooth as and I think ours went off without a hitch. We didn't have anything major go on, so. I appreciate everybody that helped and all of the employees and everything. So we'll go ahead and close the council staff reports.
And Mayor?
Yeah.
We forgot to address one thing in the staff reports. We received some CDBG money last go-around.
Right.
We put that to do some sidewalk and curb gutter. I don't have the detail. Maybe Travis has a few more. But when that went out to bid, it came in almost three to four times higher than the money that we have. The CDBG money that we have is only about a third of what it's gonna cost to do that project, so that's not in the budget we were concerned. I think Kent and Debbie, they talked to CDBG. They said, you know, if you want to turn it back and apply for more, get more money the next go-around. We just wanted to let you know and just see if you have any objections to that. Travis, do you have any additional information?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact total, but I want to say for that two blocks, and this is not counting the utilities, this was just the concrete and the asphalt. It was, I want to say three hundred and fifty thousand roughly because you have to pay David's bacon wages and some of that with that because of the money. So that's kind of why at least we get. I think we only get like.
Hundred and something.
Like around a hundred, so we would have had to come up with like two hundred something thousand. So we just didn't have it, so.
Did we just not figure that in to begin with, or why did we?
I, you know, I don't know on that exactly, but we just didn't have that much definitely.
I think we put the cost, but we didn't get awarded everything. We just got a portion of it. We can try to do what we can with it. CDBG assured us it wasn't any problem to turn it back in and try to get more of the project through the next go-around. But we wanted to bring it to you. If you have, we can try to find it.
How much would that amount do? Would that do a block of it?
I think it would only do the.
Yeah, I know we didn't even do a full block because there's some of those big trees we have to cut down and replace all the, because they're huge trip hazard. We'd have to redo the curb gutter and sidewalk and then course the road.
What would be the difference under one block? How much more?
I'd have to go back and look for sure, but I think it was on the CDBG part, I think it was around a hundred thousand at least we'd have to come up with.
Still, if we just under one block, we'd still come up with a hundred?
Because of the higher wage we have to pay for the work and stuff.
And Mayor?
Right now, the contractors are just busy, so the price is all up.
They are. Everybody's fault.
And we can get with you tomorrow sometime and go over the bid and see if you want to do something different and then come back if you want to do that. We just want to let you know that we're not trying just to get rid of money that's been given to us, but it's a bigger project than they have given us money for.
How long's the process? Can you go back to get more money?
Every year.
Every year?
Well, it's in every year they, you put in for it, so we go through the process again.
Can you change that to a different project? Will it let you do that?
It's all, I really find that.
So you have to use it for the project supply. You can't amend the project.
Yeah, because CDBG, you have to meet certain income requirements allowed, so you have to have that already.
They go before a board, and then you have to prove what they bring in and, yeah.
But you can keep that money for a year.
No, you have to use that for that project.
You have to use it for that project.
You can turn it back in and then reapply, pick it back in.
And get, okay.
But that's, just saying.
But it does go back in the pool.
Yeah, and you don't know if you can get that back or not. So, I mean, some years we have, see, I've been on it for eight years on the board, and so we've always got basically what we've wanted out of it. But, I mean, there's a lot of years that they'll split it up and if all of the other cities in the county come in and apply for that money too, then that's. So if you got a whole lot more and everybody else supplied for a lot more money, you might not even get what we're getting this year, is what I'm saying.
So we can sit down with Mayor and get Debbie and Kent go through it in more detail and see what you want to do.
That's what I'm saying. We could do a block and then fill out next year for another.
The rest of it.
Either the rest of it or another big one.
Right. All right.
All right. Okay, do we have any scouts in the audience? All right, we'll go ahead and close the council and staff. We don't have any scouts, so we'll go ahead and close the scouts. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion if I can to amend the agenda.
Okay?
I'll second.
We have a motion to amend the agenda in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next thing on the agenda will be the mayor's youth recognition ward, and I'll turn that over to Rebecca, which is our student council mayor.
Hi, first of all, tonight we have Kelly Copia from Payson Junior High. So her teacher, Ms. LeBaron, stated, Kelly has always blown me away with her work ethic and her kindness towards others. She is a wonderful friend to her peers. She will make a huge difference in this world. I know because she already has. Her teacher, Mrs. Hewlett, said, Kelly is excited about life and learning. She engages a hundred and ten percent in every challenge. It is more important for her to understand and perform correctly than it is to get the grade. And her teacher, Mrs. Gillie, stated, Kelly is a model student and a great example to her peers. She is always willing to participate and share her insight. Congratulations, Kelly.
Thank you.
Our other student is Daisy Rodriguez. She is a ninth grader at Mount Nevo Junior High. And her teachers say, Daisy is a kind and caring person. She has spent much time helping students improve their English and has done it with such respect towards her peers. As I observe her help as student in my class, Daisy doesn't come across knowing everything. She comes across with a genuine attitude of simply wanting to help. Another teacher stated that she has a wonderful attitude in class and is able to transmit her positive energy to everyone around her. Congrats, Daisy.
You guys want to stand? You guys want to take pictures? If you guys want pictures, just put it over here. Come on up. Here, stand in here. There. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is the chamber business of the month. Got somebody, okay. Turn it over to the chamber.
Thank you. My pleasure tonight to be here for the chamber. We do want to represent our business of the month. Just wanted to give a quick reminder, we do have our final. We do want to represent our business of the month. Just wanted to give a quick reminder, we do have our final movie for our summer movie in the park on the fifteenth at CS Lewis Academy. And it will be the BFG, or Big Friendly Giant, so we had a great turnout to Moana this last month and had some fun entertainment before with some fantastic dancers. So we hope to have a turnout for the BFG as well. Tonight, we are representing our, excuse me, we are recognizing the Rowley family for our red barn in Santaquin. And I'm not sure they were able to make it. Todd and his brothers are very busy with that family farm, but we do want to recognize them. Currently, five Rowley brothers and their kids are the backbone behind keeping the red barn up and running, following in the legacy of their grandfather and great-grandfather. The Rowleys also have a very dynamic and fun staff. If you haven't had a chance to taste some of their yummy homemade treats and fresh fruits, I do recommend taking a trip to Santaquin and meeting our red barns. So we do want to congratulate them on our business of the month for September.
Okay, thank you. All right, next thing on the agenda is discussion regarding the breezeway repairs. I'll turn that to Dave.
Mayor and council, we wanted to bring this to your attention. A couple of meetings ago, it was brought up that it was in need of repair. There's it was not, through our budget discussion, it was not approved as any budget item, but it became an issue. And so we did get a bid. I put it in your packet. That's what it would take. We don't have a budget for it, but there is a budget amendment tonight. We put some fund balance in there if you choose to do that. But I wanted to bring it up if you wanted to have a discussion before we have the budget amendment discussion, so. It's pretty self-explanatory as far as the bidding goes, the bid that we received, but if you choose to put that
Do we have more than one bid?
We don't so far. We wanted to get an estimate. We could put it out the bid after, but that was, we wanted to get a rough estimate of what it would cost for us to fix it, so you could have some direction on whether you wanted to appropriate some money to go ahead and fix it or if we wanted to try to put it in the budget for next year if you didn't want to do it now, so.
What's the alternative? I mean, is this bad enough that we don't want to go into winter?
Well, it's gonna keep getting, it's gonna keep deteriorating.
I don't think we want to go through winter.
That's what I'm asking.
I bet it's a two HBF up there right now.
Well, that's kind of what I thought, so I, to me, it's a no-brainer. I think we should talk about it.
Then you can discuss that when we come to the budget amendment, but I just wanted, if you wanted to have a chance to discuss it before you get
My biggest worry is we're gonna get water down in there. It's gonna freeze and pop that whole side out.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna be looking at only wall and place some money.
Okay.
I do have one question on that, Dave. The city owns one of the buildings, but the other building is owned by a private individual. Are we responsible for that wall? What's?
I think we bought the building where the breezeway is, so we can take care of both sides. And this bid covers both sides. The one side I know is at the bottom, the other part is the crack up top.
The one side probably, yo, the bottom side, but.
Yeah, if we're gonna repair it, we might as well repair it all.
Well, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, we probably put it out in the bid. I mean, we're not required. It's under the limit, but we wanted to get a bid so that you knew. And if we could get something
How's our bid process go? Do we have anybody in town that we, I mean, do we look for people in town to bid first?
If it's over a certain amount, you have to put it out the bid for anybody that wants to put in. If it's under, you know, we try to find people that
Because I thought I was talking to one of, I can't remember which mayor it was, that they have a certain percentage that if it is in their town, that they will award that project if it's within a certain percentage. Is that legal to do, to keep the business in town? I don't know. I understand. I don't know how many foster people we got in town or if we even do, but.
I think most of the department has, if they can use local people they can, but we try to get the best value we can get. And I notice this is from Springville, but we could see if there's other people that want to bid on. The person that did the original breezeway, he passed away, so we couldn't go back with him at all, so we just looked at it first.
The next go around, we just need to make sure it's done right. That last time, it wasn't. How warranty length on this? I would say probably a year and it was probably
Yeah, it's been, it's been
Well, I know on the old one, but on the ones going forward, is a year kind of the standard warranty? Or is there a warranty on their work?
I haven't looked close enough.
Some of them probably will give you a warranty, depending on the foster.
Usually on a construction project, you need a year.
How long will this project take, Dave? I mean, I'm wondering about weather and I don't know if we're gonna be able to do this once the weather starts going bad and
So yeah, if they have to, I'm sure what they'll do is scaffold up the whole thing and then carpet, put heaters under it if it goes into the cold winter.
Yeah, I mean, if budget is approved for this, we just get on.
Problem of it is, is everybody's slammed right now. Whoever you pick.
You're getting, you're getting high rates because everybody's busy.
It's gonna be high rates and it's gonna be a ways out.
Okay.
It's just about time for it to happen. Okay, next thing is the discussion regarding the mural project and I'm gonna have Steve do that. Also, why Steve is here after we have the discussion on the mural project when we're all done. And I'll have you stick around and we'll have you also do the appointment of the library award. So let's do the one first and then we'll
Thank you. It's so good to hear the discussion on the breezeway. That is absolutely terrific to see that moving forward. It's nice. During the last few months, several people have been meeting to discuss the possibility of seeing a Payson residence would be in favor of murals at various locations supported by Payson residents on selected properties. Kyle Vincent, he's an art instructor at Mount Nebo Junior High School, has expressed an interest in coordinating the effort on a community-wide basis, if there's that support. He has an extensive background in mural painting. In addition to his participation with the Cabaret Choir, he also has a website where he also demonstrates his own artwork. So Kyle is gonna be the pinpoint of this presentation. He's a professional mural painter for the past fifteen years. He's a junior high art teacher for the past seven over at Mount Nebo Junior High. He's created murals for students every year, the last seven or eight years. Graduated with a degree in art from Southern Utah University. Founded a mural company, Vincent Art and Design, about fifteen, about ten years ago. And he teaches full-time art now and paints murals on the side. So with that, I'd like to introduce Kyle. He wants to give you an overview as to what he's looking at and coordinating at the city level for murals in Payson. Kyle?
You can talk and explain it, but I gotta take you mic. Okay. All right, I'm thankful to be able to be here. It's been fun working with Steve. He kind of gave you my background, more or less, but this project that we've been working on and we wanted to bring it before you to just let you know that we're here and that we're, we've got some plans, you know, trying to beautify. I have a presentation that I wanted to just show you really fast and then if you have any questions, we can discuss it. And every panther hears the roar, by the way. As you can see, I just came from the school with my nice Mount Nebo shirts on. All right. Oh, it's not? That's interesting. It was before. That's interesting. We thought we had all the kinks worked out and we had this hooked up and it was gonna be the right screen and now it's not, so we'll see what happens. So Steve approached me about, you know, getting involved in this and there was a lot of artists that were involved and we first, you know, talking about it and we brought it down, you know, just kind of worked our way down and got it to where we felt, you know, comfortable with the direction that we were going. So the plan right now, I mean, we're in the works and we're just trying to figure out how to get started and where to do that. You know, where we can paint murals, which is interesting because the breezeway was one of those things that came up that would be a wonderful place to do murals. Let's see if we can make this happen. Hey, do you know about this kind of stuff? Is that a mural? Oh, okay. You're awesome. Okay. Okay, so with the things that we've been talking about, we've got kind of a threefold vision. I want to just really quickly show this short video clip. Hopefully the file file will make it work.
This mural is one of thousands in Philadelphia. They're in yuppie Rittenhouse Square and working-class Fishtown, near the Liberty Bell and in West Philly too. Why does Philly have so many murals and how did they make it happen? It's not just because they're pretty, though they are that. Murals aren't paintings, but tools that create wealth, employ people and can help reimagine any city, one wall at a time. At Broad and Spring Garden, you'll find Meg Saligman's Common Threads. Across the street from that, near Great, you'll find this humble pole. This is kind of the thing that started Philly's obsession with murals, graffiti.
It was all like an unknown world to me and in a way, but it was also like super exciting.
Jane Golden founded Philly's Mural Arts Program. She came to Philadelphia from LA, where she had painted more than fifty murals. She was hired in the nineteen eighties to work as a part of Mayor Wilson Good's anti-graffiti network. People saw graffiti as a plague, so the idea was to stop graffiti by recruiting graffiti artists to make murals.
If you hadn't met me back then, my colleagues would have been Baby Rock or Knife and Cool Earl and Disco Duck. It was like, it was unbelievable. It was so great. I like fell in love with Philadelphia through the eyes of young people and community leaders.
Here's Dr. Jay in a suit. It looks good, right? When this mural was painted in nineteen ninety, people were certain it'd be defaced with graffiti. When it wasn't, it proved an anti-graffiti strategy. Murals could serve as an artistic shield against vandalism. That's become a model for lots of cities nationwide.
At the end of the day, it was like the perfect vehicle to really move these kids from where they were to another point without being like a fascist or a dictator or too prescriptive.
But I'm gonna stop it right there. It's a really good video. It gave me, you know, some real inspiration when I watched that, you know. I go around town and working with the youth, I'm over at Mount Nebo Junior High and I, you know, I get the feeling that a lot of youth aren't really proud to be from Payson and they feel like they're kind of in a ghetto and it really frustrates me because that's not how I see it and I know that's not how we see it, but that's kind of how they're starting to see it. And so my thought is that we need to reverse that and change that idea and so I thought murals would be one great way to do that. Why should Payson have murals? Well, first of all, they add to the beauty of downtown Payson. I think murals are a wonderful thing. You know, some people, you know, depending on what the mural is, some people may not like it, but they can be a really wonderful thing. Also, community investment from the younger generation. I just really felt strongly that if we're gonna get a hold of this younger generation, we've got to give them some pride in what they're part of and give them, you know, something beautiful to create. There's something about creating that just brings out the best in people and makes them, you know, value where they live. These are a couple of murals that I worked on with students when I was teaching down in North St. Pete. This one was designed and I worked with a group of students at the school and we painted it together. And it was a really great experience because the kids got to feel like a part of it. It's right in front of the library in that school and it's still there and it hasn't been vandalized at all yet and I'm hoping that it will stay that way. This is another one that we did down there in Maroonai with the Latinos in Action. You're probably familiar with that group, but I was an advisor for the Latinos in Action and we went to a local business and said, "We want to do something that will, you know, help this Hispanic culture, Latino culture to feel a little bit more, you know, pride." And so we came up with this mural that we did on the side there of the building there, the Hispanic market. And it was a really fun experience. We involved other artists in the community and we all kind of got together and did this. And it's been done, you know, all over America and all over the world. I mean, it's something that works. And the other thing that we really think is it'll be helping high school artists build portfolios and really, you know, get ready to go out into the art world. So that's definitely, you know, one of the things that I'm excited about. In detail, basically what will happen is that art instructors, artist instructors, will work with students to design and create these murals. They'll be high school students and possibly some junior high students, depending on what interests we have. But it will just really get those students out there and be able to use their skills to make something beautiful. And we've just looked at some possible locations. We looked at that breezeway and it's funny, looking at this picture, it's kind of dark, but I see the places where there's the graffiti has been on the wall and it's been painted over and probably been done multiple times. And I know that's a frustrating thing. I really feel like a mural in a space like that could do wonders, you know, that the kids can love it and feel like it's, you know, a really good thing for them. Sorry about that. Another possible place, we looked at the back of the library. Thought it'd be really fun to do an interesting mural back there that the kids could really enjoy. I know that's right next to the breezeway, but it would still be neat. Another one, we've talked to this business owner already and decided, "Forget me, NOS, we thought that would be a great place where people just coming into town, you know, from the north can see this beautiful mural." And, you know, we've just talked about some possibilities of murals that would, you know, maybe create ideas of freedom and success. This is another idea that I thought, you know, on that theme that just gives some kids some inspiring and maybe even create like a photo opportunity spot where the younger generation can go there and, you know, want to sit and take a picture of that and then they'll also bring more interest to that downtown area. We really feel like this could be a wonderful thing and we're excited to do it. We're just, you know, in the process of figuring it out, so I don't know if you have any questions for us or anything at all?
Any discussion?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea because as we brand our city and we try to use our branding and put murals up, I think it's very attractive to the city. And also, talk to Steve a little bit about this. We have that park tax, which is part of his art. If we figure out a way to use that park tax to do some of this, I think it's a great idea.
And that is something that we're looking for funding. We're not here asking for funding, but we're just looking into the possibilities of becoming a nonprofit and getting funding from there or from, you know, the National Endowment for the Arts or whatever it takes to get the funding because obviously murals aren't created by themselves. It takes, you know, money and supplies and time and all that, so. But if we have high school students doing it, you know, and just one artist instructor that's kind of leading them in it, then we can definitely cut the costs down.
Could we run that through the Huey?
If it's on the Huey's building, I think, but
Well, I mean, because they wanted to, I know they wanted to do classes and stuff like that down there.
Yeah, I've never thought about that because, yeah, that's what Gordon wanted.
And that's 501(c)(3) and I know Gordon wanted to really get in because his wife painted a lot, so.
Yeah.
Might be something that they might want to even look into and then that would be a 501(c)(3).
Backside by one man band.
And
On that backside?
Well, and not only would you have to, if you done one there or whatever, but I mean, if you could work under their umbrella,
That's what, yeah.
That would be a 501(c)(3) umbrella that you could tax free.
It's already in place.
It's already in place. It just is, you don't have to reinvent the wheel again.
Okay.
It might be a good, a good thought if the board would
That's it. So we would have to be a nonprofit organization in order to qualify for funds like that, or you're saying we could
Yeah, it would have to be a nonprofit. You would have to be part of the Huey yours. Yeah, you'd have to be part of that. They would be your governing board saying, "Okay, well, we'll give you as much money."
Try to create your own. It's just
Yeah, but I know from experience to give one of those is, it's pretty tough. Unless you got some money and some lawyers and
This we have not.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, but that would be a good thing if you could piggyback on somebody like that. And then the only problem of it is, is you're gonna be responsible to them for what you do, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah.
But on the other hand, that would give Huey more of a advertising or exposure and, you know what I mean? So it might work both ways, is all I'm saying.
We looked at, I mean, just wondering, I know that there are issues like if we're using high school students to come and paint. I mean, liability issues, having students up on scaffolding, you know, stuff like that, but we're trying to figure out what, how do we handle something like that and let them do it and not, you know, have them in danger or anything like that or Let them do it, and not have them in danger or anything like that?
And I don't know what kind of insurance they've got with the plays and everything. I mean, that's...
We'd probably coordinate with Niblet School District.
Yeah, I would say you could probably work some of that through, even through the city. I'm sure you could get to a certain percent, couldn't you?
Yeah, if it's our property, like I say, we can talk to our insurance company along with Niblet School District. I think we could work something out.
I like the idea.
I think it's a good idea.
I mean, there's a few different avenues. I think if you looked at it, we could probably make something more, and make it profitable, not profitable, but I mean, be a win-win for everybody.
That's the goal. I think the buy-in, like if you're a community, if you're involved and you're doing something to make it better, that's really what we've been looking for and trying to get, is to get more of a community buy-in. And that changes everything. If you're a kid, and it's your community, and you beautify it, that's a game changer. Unless we do get that buy-in from the younger generation, it's gonna be hard to stop graffiti.
Well, you're getting buy-in from their parents as well, too.
Yeah.
Like, you're becoming a vehicle for their kids to do and accomplish, and they're gonna go downtown and say, "Hey, little Johnny drew that." "He helped draw that."
And take pictures by it. And I know, like in Philadelphia, people go there and tour the city just to see the murals. I mean, that's like, it's an attraction. Why not us, you know? We could do that.
Yeah, I think it really helps. I was in Dallas over the weekend, and they had a lot of murals down there that we saw.
Yeah. Yeah, it's all over, and it's a really big thing right now. I think mural painting in cities especially is just really...
So do we need to put this on the agenda for approvals? Or what do you want to do as far as the next step?
I think we're just pursuing it. We just wanted to let you know we're here and we're about it. And when we get to that point, if we're looking for funds and have a question about it, we can do that.
So are you gonna pick out some locations? I know you showed the breezeway. Do you have other areas that you'd want to...
We do. I mean, we looked at several and talked to different business owners. And some are kind of a, "Yeah, maybe," and some are not so sure. And I get that. I mean, they maybe don't know. So that's what I thought, if we can get one that looks really good, then maybe there'll be more businesses that say, "Yeah, we'd like you to come and do this." That'd be a great thing, so.
I've seen some one project core that they have four, and they went broke in every four years. So, it was up for about four years, they go over it, and then they work well for your school class or our class, where as they transition through the years, each one would have an opportunity of doing a mural.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Great ideas. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next thing, Steve, do you want to go over the... Library Board? And that'll skip us up to item number six on the resolution for the appointment of Library Board.
Thank you very much. I really need to, as much has been said about Janine, is she still here?
She stepped out.
She stepped out. She was just someone very helpful, very helpful. We raised, at the bookstore at the library, the used book, almost $1,500, just in those five or six dollars. And I can't tell you, the community donating almost down the parade, they would drop money into the buckets as boys went by. And it was three or $400 there. We're still counting pennies on that one. But just pictures of little kids dropping one penny in is...
A million pennies is a lot to count.
That's a lot, right? It's a lot to roll, too, at night, after a meeting.
Actually, if you don't want to roll them, you bring them down to the bank, and they don't, the banks don't like enrolled anymore. They have to unroll them. So you can bring them down to Central Bank, and they'll count them for you for free.
If we couldn't find anybody to do it, how you die.
I haven't been able to count the money, there's so many pennies.
We'll do that for you.
Gee. He'd be a good governor. This item, we're losing two at the library. Darlene Vaughn, she's relocating St. George. She and her husband, Tom. Tom's a just wonderful storyteller. He's been doing that for several years over there. And so we've got, this makes, if we approve, if you folks are generous enough to approve Jennifer, that would make it back up to the total of eight. She is now serving with SESD. She's the major secretary over there. She represents SESD, serving as the second vice chair of the Payson Lions Club. She's recently joined the Payson Lions Club, active member of the Payson Santa Juan Chamber, collaborating with the Utah Association of Special Districts to improve services for and status of citizens in South Utah County. She's really a brilliant lady. I'm so grateful to have Doug there at library board meetings, and she's been there the last couple of them. And has been very much a contributor as to what the library can do and what the potential is.
The library's doing great things. If you haven't been down there, it's happened. It's a... If you're doing good things in the library, I'm impressed.
Yeah, I am, too. The Lions Club's doing their project down here, and I think that's been...
Yeah, they're working together really closely with the city and the community. It's, we can get a lot done that way.
Well, I'm really impressed with her background. I know her, and I think she'd be an excellent addition to your board.
Thank you, I do, too. I think she's...
So do we have any other discussion on Jennifer, or a motion to...
I'd make the motion to approve Resolution 9-6, 2017, appointing Jennifer Hatcher as a member of the library board.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion and a second. Any other discussions? Seeing none, Mike?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to know? Thank you. Okay. We're gonna go back to... We have a motion to go to public hearing. So moved. Grab a second.
Second.
We have a motion to second going to public hearing for the fiscal year 2017-18 budget amendment. And we will now turn that over to Sarah.
Yep. So I'll be quick. And so, our first budget amendment, we sold some Christmas decorations, so we're just asking for that amount to be put back into Jimmy's budget, the Petit Neat budget. Then, we received a donation from the Scottish Institute, so we're putting that back into the parks budget. The next one is the library breezeway repair that Dave just mentioned. It's about $28,000. And that's new budget that we need. And the next one is its police overtime reimbursement that we received, and they are just asking to have that revenue that they received put back into their overtime budget. And then, from here on, we have carryovers that we have from last year's projects that we've been working on that weren't finished, but we need to carry over those funds. So they've been approved in previous budget years. So we've got, we have 400 South Water Line that we're working on. We need $255,000 of that carried over. But then, is Brent here? There is an anticipated change order of $45,000. I can let Brent expound on that, if you would like. Can you expound on that?
Come on up.
Yeah.
Anticipated, may or may not happen. We were on past the trench in the road, and the width of the road, you know what it is. We would like to, we'd like to overlay on that road in some of these, over at the goose nest. So that's about extra money this fall. It may or may not, we probably be under that, but we're just... And if the budget hours hit, we'll add anticipation of overlaying that road. Once the water line goes through, and it comes to the ladders, it will be... It's rough right now. And then we will just clean that up and finish the project.
So Sarah, that $45,000 is not part of the carryover? That would come from the general fund, then?
Well, it's not general fund, it's part of the water fund. But last year's budget, they had some funds that they were under. Brent and I went over his budget, and he was under by quite a bit, so...
So that's carryover, the $45,000 could be carryover?
Yeah, it's just, we only appropriated 255 for that last year.
Would that go into the streets department, or would that go into the water?
Since it's a water project, it can go in the water, or if you want it, go on streets. It can go either way, because it's so intermingled.
If Kent threw that, we'd just make these out of the water.
Yeah.
We will pass the transcarrying leaky project, and then just overlay it.
Well, I think you'd be better off doing, well, what is the rest of the utilities underneath it?
Probably like everything else in the city.
The sewers, all like, but it's okay. The PI is, the water is definitely...
All right.
Okay, can we move on?
Yeah.
Any more discussion?
Keep going.
Okay, then the next one is, sorry, Nasey, it's getting a little weird. It's the Memorial Park Wellhouse. It's a carryover from that project, $95,000. They're really close to being done with that. Are you done with that?
Yes, we received, we have like $7,000 left. But they, the billion came in July, so it was 70% over. It was all budgeted, and we just carried that over to finish up the last one.
Same with this one. It's the irrigation meters that they're installing. This is what was left, we're carrying that forward. And then, they purchased a truck last year, and this is what was left as well, that they needed to put the box on. They just didn't get it before June.
We were able to do that in June, which is a quarter in March.
And then, last year, Solid Waste sold some equipment, and it was about a $37,000 sale that they had. And we're paying off the scraper this year, and we're buying a warranty on the scraper. We've had a few issues with our scraper. So to help cover that extra cost, we're carrying that over to help cover that payoff of the scraper and the warranty. But then, for the solid waste, they are doing a master plan in groundwater testing. And that was in budget last year, so they're carrying over $110,000 on that. And the electric fund, they had $180,000 appropriated to pay for the strawberry lime payments. That's anytime that we, how do I describe this in a way that I won't butcher it, is wrong here?
If we annex property, so we can buy it out?
Yeah.
We have rights to legally, and we have the supermunicipal buyout.
Yes, yeah, exactly. So we're carrying that over. And then we have the East Side Lift Station. We had $103,000 left in last year's budget, we're carrying over. And then Dell, he is replacing land desk and doing a Microsoft Exchange. There is a description there that he got to me. He had a meeting, he couldn't be here tonight. But I can send this to you, an email, if you want more description on that. But he has that in his budget, and carrying that over as well. The seniors' Eldridge Grant, she didn't spend all of that, so we're carrying that forward. The mayor's economic development budget, we're carrying money over from that budget to help with the EDCU golf tournament. The boiler, as you know, we are in process of repairing that, so we carried over what was left. And then the golf clubhouse roof repair, it's $50,000. We did have that in last year's budget, but because Petit Neat was more than what was expected, it ate up that budget. So it's not new budget, but it is. We did approve that last year, but it was eaten up with the Petit Neat. It was more expensive than what was planned. So we're asking for $50,000 from fund balance to cover that golf clubhouse roof repair. And that comes under Steve's budget. That's why it's in the general fund. Steve usually pays for that. But if we have concerns with that, we can put it in the golf fund, but that means we would just have to transfer money from the general fund to the golf fund, to cover that. And then we have a carryover from the cemetery road construction, $210,000. Carryover for striping costs. We did some striping on some parking lots, and we just pulled money from budgets in last year to cover those costs for the general fund and the golf fund. And then the golf course, they're working on cart paths and sodding around cart paths. They have money from last year that they're asking to have carried over for that project. And then the park, they're carrying over money for a wrought iron fence that they're hitting for park that they've been working on. And then this one, the Volker grants, we changed just a little bit. They increased their grant money that they gave to us. They increased by $1,700. And Patty gave me the detail on which ones increased. And we can see that the education and training increased $1,960, and the supplies decreased $187, for a total of $1,773 increase. So that's not new, that's new revenue. It's not asking for fund balance.
And it's not carryover?
No, it's not carryover, it's new.
There's something different about this year's budget in there. She was funded for two years. So part of this may end up being carried over into the...
They don't approve the grant until August timeframe. So when we approve the budget, that's on preliminary numbers. And then they send us the final, and then we adjust when they get the final numbers. And then this last one is for RDA. We have money in there to construct the 1,700 West Road that's for the tri-state metal building. And they haven't fixed, or finished that yet. They're waiting till they're done, and then they'll overlay it. So all that heavy equipment doesn't ruin the new laid asphalt. But you'll go into the RDA, and you can approve that one. But they're asking to carry over $78,000. So majority of them are carryovers.
All right. Is that it?
That's it.
This is a public hearing. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to say anything or address? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion to second to close public hearing. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Okay, we are now out of public hearing. Do we have any discussion on the amendments?
The only thing...
Okay.
Go ahead. The only thing I have is, just on that breezeway, just if we have more than one bid, just get a couple.
Really?
Couple more bids, yeah.
And I forgot, in my case, to try to be quick. So whenever I reconcile the monthly bank statements, I come in and put in numbers and try to project where we're at. And this is the most current numbers with last week's accounts payable put in there. And our general fund, if you remember, we appropriated a lot out of the general fund balance last year. But our revenues came in quite a bit higher, and the departments did really well to try to conserve. And this is where we're at, will probably be to the good, about $260,000. So we didn't even have to dip into the fund balance like we thought we were going to. Because it was about a $680,000 appropriation of fund balance that we did. But because revenues came in higher, and we didn't spend as much as we budgeted, we didn't dip in the fund balance.
We're getting up pretty close to that $25,000, or 25% max.
Yeah. So if you feel like there's some projects that we need to do, then we can look at that.
There's lots of projects.
Yeah, no, I mean, like really pressing. But we haven't had our audit yet. I don't want to, this is just speculation. We won't have our audit done till probably December. So once December hits, I will feel more comfortable. But this is based on numbers that I have so far.
All right. Any other discussion from the council, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass the resolution 09-06-217, I'll make a motion to re, um, pass the resolution oh nine oh six to seventeen, amend the fiscal budget for two thousand seventeen eighteen. And with the stipulation, we get a couple more bids on the breezeway.
Second.
Okay, I noted that we still have to do the RDA part, and approve it, so. But that's been covered here. We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor, Mike?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, uh, the next two items.
Mayor, do you want me to give an explanation?
Let's, let's read the other two, and then we'll go, cause we have another item in our D A. I'm gonna turn it over to Jill for a minute on the next public hearing. Uh, this would be on the, um, the Salem Canal properties. And so, we're looking at maybe tabling that for a month. But I will let Jill kind of go over it, and then you guys can decide whether you wanna table, uh, items two and three.
Thank you, Mayor, I, cause I know we do have some residents, um, that are here to address this item, so I did wanna provide a little bit of explanation. And we do have the applicant here as well, so Andrew Christensen. Um, he did want to attend it, just in case the city council had any questions. But I, we received notice from the applicant that he recently found out that there may be some additional piped irrigation facilities that traverse the subject property that they weren't aware of. So we've gone through all of this process, and, and it was something that new, that, that came up. And, um, they need some additional time to explore, uh, where those facilities are, how they can be accommodated, so they're not interrupting, um, any delivery of irrigation water. Um, as a side note, the delivery of irrigation water in this area has been, um, a topic throughout this entire process, whether it's at a staff level or at the planning commission level, of making sure that these farmlands in this area still have, um, the ability to, to be irrigated. And so the applicant, um, understanding of the concern with irrigation water in the area, he felt like it would be beneficial to table a decision, um, until he has some additional time to explore this, and to be able, able to come back with some solutions that he can present, not only to the public, but to the city council before a final decision is made. I'm not sure, Andrew, if that, if that addresses the issue in full. Uh, but just for the benefit of the residents and the property owners that are here, I did wanna provide that explanation. It was scheduled as a public hearing, you could accept public, um, input tonight if you wanted, or it could be tabled to a future date, and then, uh, additional notice be given to the property owners, um, so they can attend that subsequent meeting, it's up to the city council.
Okay, do we have a motion or a discussion, or do you wanna do that?
I think we gotta hear from the people that came.
I agree with that, they came, gave up their time.
What you need to do then is just open the public.
So we'll just open the public hearing, and then all this, uh.
And then at the end, when you don't have any more comments from the public, you can continue that. And that way you don't have to republish them now, but you continue that, the existing public hearing on these items until it's rescheduled in front of the city council.
Okay, so do we have a motion to go into public hearing? Motion to go into public hearing, a second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Called. Okay, we're now into public hearing.
Is that public hearing for item two and three?
Two and three, yes. And, uh, this is on the, uh, parcel located, uh, in the intersection of thirteen hundred east and Salem Canal Road. And, uh, we will turn that over to Jill, I guess, for a minute, and let her explain it, and then we'll turn it over to the public.
Yeah, if you want me to give a brief overview, I know that some of the residents that are here, they've probably heard this presentation before, so I'll try to be brief. But for those of you that, that aren't familiar with the development, it'll take a few minutes. But the area that we're looking at, property that we're looking at is the northeast corner of the intersection of thirteen hundred east and Salem Canal Road. So it's highlighted there, um, in red. Uh, the property is owned by the, um, the Loveless Trust. Um, and so they are looking at selling the property, uh, to the applicant to develop a residential subdivision. So there are some existing conditions on the site, um, that the applicant has had to, had to address. There's an existing home on lot one of the subdivisions, this is a picture of the existing home, where the remainder of the property is just open field that has been used for agricultural purposes. Uh, there's other features that are unique to the site, there are irrigation facilities, as we mentioned. Um, not only, um, the Salem Canal that, that extends along the Salem Canal Road, but there are private, um, irrigation facilities that, that are extended in order to serve the farmlands in the area. Um, the completion of roadway improvements, we would need to, uh, pipe the, your, the Salem Canal facility that's there, shown in that picture, um, in order to widen the road. Um, the existing home needs to be connected to all city services. It is already connected to city water and to city power, but it is currently on a septic tank. Um, and, so they, they still need to move forward on making some adjustments to make sure that the existing dwelling is on city services. Satisfaction of setback requirements, uh, we just have a minor issue to still resolve, um, with one of the accessory buildings on the site. Uh, there are private utilities facilities, there's actually, as you can see also in the picture, there is a, a gas line, um, that's located there, that the applicant will need to work with Questor on that, um, to accommodate that facility. And then, um, any animal rights, there isn't any animal rights on the property now, but once properties are subdivided, if there were any animal rights or any request for animal rights, they are relinquished with the subdivision. So this is the, the general layout of the development. Uh, there on the left-hand side is just the overall layout of the development, um, showing how those roads will be extended, showing how those lots will gain access, not only for vehicular traffic, but for pedestrian facilities and for utilities. On the right-hand side is, um, gets a little more detailed with all the utility connections, but just to show, you know, how they are anticipating to have the turnaround there on the east side of the property, and how they will provide municipal services to each lot. Here's a copy of the final plat, um, a little less detailed, but just showing the, the size of the parcels there. Um, they, they are all over, um, ten thousand square feet, some of them, um, going up to twenty thousand square feet. So there's, there's a good variety in the range of, uh, development, um, sizes. There are two land use applications the applicant is requesting. Property is currently zoned R one A, which is one acre lots. So the first request is that they wanna rezone it to the R one nine zone. The reason for the R one nine zone is for the frontage. They're still willing to have ten thousand square foot lots or larger, which would be consistent with the, the existing zoning in the area, but they want the R one nine zone just to reduce the frontage from a hundred feet to ninety feet. Um, the, the sizes of lots that are being proposed are consistent with the east side comprehensive plan. However, any zone change is legislative approval by the city council. Uh, subdivision, they, the applicant has to gain preliminary and final plat approval. Um, the applicant has been working, or staff has been working with the applicant in order to make sure the requirements of the specific plan for that area, zoning district, and that the standards have been addressed. Uh, and so staff felt like, staff was comfortable with granting. When we finalize this discussion and, and we have a motion, staff is supportive of preliminary and final concurrently. Um, the planning commission, they have completed a review of the, of the proposal and forwarded recommendation to the city council. And then it is the city council's decision to, um, review and make a final decision. And then the terms or, of the, or the conditions imposed by the city council for this development will be ratified in a development agreement between applicant and Payson City. Zone change request, as I mentioned, is currently R one A. They're requesting R one nine, as you see there. There is a, a range of lot sizes, uh, anywhere from, you know, ten thousand square feet all the way up to twenty thousand. Request for the ninety feet. It is consistent with the east side comprehensive plan. I know that that has been a concern, um, a lot of the residents in, at the Haskellville area, of making sure that we are following that planning document, which requires, uh, in this traditional neighborhood, which is the yellow on, on the map there, uh, but they have to at least be a quarter acre or larger, which they are. Um, compliance with city regulations, again, we would just continue working with staff to make sure that all the requirements of city ordinance are addressed. Um, they are well on their way to, to having those, um, project drawings finalized. Um, phasing plan, uh, there, there was a request to modify the phasing plan just because of the irrigation season, they cannot pipe the Salem Canal or complete those roadway improvements until the water's out. Uh, we're getting closer and closer to the time that the water's gonna be out, but when this project first started, the applicant had requested, and, and had requested that the planning commission also, that in the event that there's still water in that facility, of having those, um, improvements be delayed until the water's out. But that they could still move forward with the new homes on the northern portion of the property. Um, and then the development agreement, as I mentioned, we would ratify the, the zone change, the housing product and design, and any other conditions that are imposed by the city council. So here's some pictures of the housing product that they're anticipating that would be constructed in this subdivision. And then here's some floor plans, and, um, also some elevations that were included in your packet. So you probably had a chance of that. As far as public input and city council, um, discussion, um, again, it's two land use applications that we're considering, as Mayor mentioned, we're combining public hearing for that. Um, options for motion, we can remand it back to staff for further review. Approve is proposed, approve of conditions or deny. And again, with this new information that was, uh, provided to staff today, we are requesting that it, uh, the public hearing be tabled and brought back to you for a final decision at a subsequent meeting. So with that, we can turn the time over to Mr. Haskell to start the public hearing.
This is public hearing, so, Mr. Haskell, state your name and for the record.
I'm John Haskell. I live on six eighty-eight south, thirteen hundred east. What she's covered, uh, hasn't bothered me at all. Our trouble is, our biggest problem is the boundary. You're gonna be down along a ditch on the east side of that whole area. And the next door is quarter horse breeders and, and operators. Kids just love to come and play with their horses and pet them. I know, cause I've got, I live on that corner of thirteen hundred east, and, and they come up and whip mine all the time. In fact, I lost a colt, because those kids like to feed them. And a baby colt is kinda like a baby child. You can't give them something that they're not supposed to eat. This colt got scours and ammonia and died. He was three months old. Now on the other side of the fence on the east side, you're gonna have that same problem. I understand that they're not gonna build a fence on those boundaries. They need one badly. Wind blows, and all the trash and garbage goes in, over into our fields. Or a fence will stop that. Also, it'll keep the kids from running out in the field, tromping down the crops. Uh, it'll also discourage dogs from chasing your horses, uh, one thing or another, so. That's what I'm concerned with. I told, when they built that, uh, uh, housing development below me, I, I got up in church and told them, and I said, I can, uh, go along with any of you family as long as you're honest, and you don't, you damn it, got, got dogs. But most of them's got dogs. And I told them, if they come through, and I was in the herford business at that time, I said, if they just come through and a dog just walks through and don't pay no attention, the cars are all, they're in good shape. And if they pay attention to them cars, there's gonna be a dog that comes up missing. And that's the same way with, with this housing development, if you don't put a fence up, uh, say things to you.
My name is Ludeen Haskell. Excuse me, I have problems with it. But, uh, I own the, the property on the east side of this subdivision. And it is a concern about the children. When it was built across the street from where Ashley is building theirs, we had children coming over and playing in that ditch, playing in my fields. They run through the hay, and it is a big problem. I had the vineyards, tell them they weren't welcome, they couldn't play there. I have machinery there. Uh, I have divs, flows, wagons, uh, that I, that's where I keep all my machinery. And it, it is a concern. And I know that I'll have to be responsible for it, but it would be nice. I wanna thank Mr. Christensen. He has very, been very good to come and visit with me and my boys, and be with us to discuss things that was my concern, uh, when we did the planning permission meeting. And he's been very good and very responsive. And I, I wanna thank him for that, because it is, irrigation is a concern. Our wastewater off our fields is a concern. We have to have somewhere to put that wastewater, or we're in trouble. Uh, you have to take care of your own wastewater, it's a law. We, um, anyway, that's, that's most of my concerns. And, and I do appreciate him. I requested he come and visit with me and my boys after the meeting, and he did it. And he's been very nice, and he told me that he would come and walk the east line with me. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Brian Christensen, I live on six eighteen south, thirteen hundred east, so actually right across the street from where it's gonna be put, put in. Um, we just have a couple of concerns. As much as we hate to see our view go, we're actually okay with this. Um, it seems like it's been a well-developed plan. Um, just some of our concerns though are just the pressurized irrigation over on that side of Payson, and, and maybe it's like this everywhere, I don't know, but we just know. It's really, really bad. We have those three parks that you can see, uh, in that area. So our homes and the parks, it's very difficult to get water there. So I think a lot of us homeowners are concerned that adding more homes over there, we're really not gonna be able to get the pressurized irrigation that we need. Another concern is the road. Uh, thirteen hundred east is in really poor condition already. Uh, it's not very wide, and they know they have plans, I believe, on the south side to widen that. But on the north side, um, on that road that goes by the hospital and then cuts into that intersection of thirteen hundred east, even just this last week, there was a moving van that actually, um, got stuck in the ditch as it was trying to make the turn, because it's just not a very wide road. And so we're nervous that more traffic's just gonna cause things like that. It's just the condition of that road, and so. Those are just some of our conditions, again, the condition of that thirteen hundred east, it's, it's always ruts everywhere, and so just sort of added, um, traffic. That's just something that we, the public, get addressed as this comes in. So, again, it's, we also commend Mr. Christensen, it seems like this is very well thought out, and that they have good plans, so we're okay with it. We just hope that the city council, when it comes to that point, will understand, um, some of these, these concerns that we have.
And I think the pressure is irrigation's a big concern all over town.
Yeah, sure it is. I mean, it's, it's really.
We would build out for, for what, twenty years ago?
Yeah, so, thank you.
Travis, aren't you starting to look into our whole pressurized irrigation system, citywide?
We're gonna find out how much it's gonna cost to fix it.
Right, but you're looking into it, right?
We're meeting with an engineer next week to try to look at it. Tell we have meters in, though, it's gonna be kind of a guess on how to, cause you don't know how much water people are using.
We put the system in, the, the subdivision into the model system, and it works. It just depends, if everyone washes at the same time, not on their specific days, we can't. When we switch the days over, everyone just, yeah, we can't do the whole city on like a Monday, and, but.
Yeah, the days kinda really screwed everybody up this year.
Yeah, so it's been.
They haven't really cared about it.
But it does, it will work if we do it how we're supposed to do it, so I, yeah.
Okay, Doris?
I'm Doris Adams, I live at twelve sixty-three east, six forty south. And just to point a personal privilege, I wanna thank you, Mayor Moore, for your eight years of service.
Thank you.
And I wanna thank the council people for the work you do. Um, I've been well-served in Payson. I was, I believe I was born in the kitchen, I understand, it used to be the labor and delivery room. My needs are met. It's a good life. You bring good people here. I do a lot of business in Payson, and the people at the bank, at the hospital, they're good, good people. I understand that a letter I sent to Jill before the planning and zoning commission is in the minutes, and where I addressed traffic, and I'm glad Brian brought that up again. Because, um, when I come around off Crystal Drive and head down to Salem Canal Road, and there's the all-red orchards all lined up there, it's absolutely completely gorgeous. It's a beautiful place to live. And I think how wonderful that more people could come and, and share this. I actually live in a home that used to be somebody else's field, and they, they allowed, they lost the field, so I could live there. And many of the people that live in those homes don't know they live in Haskellville. But as a young child, I knew it was Haskellville, and it was a special place. And that was, that was incredible, it's incredible to think I actually lived there. And so, just briefly, since you know my concern about the, the roads, I'm a little curious how we work with the county on that, cause we're making some plans as a city that to facilitate their success, we need some help from the county. Cause we don't own all the roads that access that. And I work from my home, and mom, maybe three fifteen. I'm a little more cautious when the school lays out, I like hop in the car and run to Salem and get a drink. There'll be a lot more people on the road. I might not be able to do that in fifteen minutes with all these people in these school buses and all the traffic, and, and, um, I'm listening to the news about the one-way out of, um, Florida now. And I'm listening to the news about they're one-way out of Florida now. And traffic matters. I thought many of a time how I was going to go south if I needed, if there was a problem north. And of course, I'm gonna go up over the mountain and take the loop. And so, anyway, there's a lot of people. And we need people, and people are great. But I don't know if you know the answer, how we get the county to help accommodate the needs from that road. You've driven, you guys all know how 1300 East, just it's so on our own. And I don't even know how they can widen it because, you know, there's the house on the one side, the Zeeman House, and then the several houses on the other end. I don't even know how they can widen that. And even if they do, you know, it goes down to a T.
You've got all the irrigation ditches right on the side too, right?
Yeah.
So... And I think a lot of that, as development comes, the developers usually take care of widening the roads and stuff. Until then, I think a lot of that, you have to go before the county commission and get them to approve it in their budget. To come out and...
Because the people that are gonna build those beautiful homes, they're gonna have big, beautiful cars, three of them, some of them. Is that been something you've considered to approach the county about that? Or you've got a lot of issues, I realize. I don't know.
I know that there is 25 homes. I know there's gonna be some cars there. We're gonna improve the intersection there at Salem Canal Road. So, that will be a new intersection, a nice wide.
One on the other end.
One on the new end.
Yeah. Yeah, they'll go this way. And then we'll be, and then the county will have to put a light on that road that goes Salem Canal Road and up to El Ridge. And my son lives up there, and I'm glad he's close. But, boy, when they're ready to go home, they're headed home fast. So, anyway, so those are my issues, is traffic. I even, I want you to know that I'm making a graveyard in my lawn for all those dogs. So, I'm getting rid of the dogs as fast as I can and burying them. So, we won't, we won't have any more of those. Hey, you guys, thank you.
Doris, you have changed.
Okay, do we have anybody else who would like to come forward?
I would like to mention... One of you guys. It's the Lyman, Mariana's again. That road, you know, when I grew up, I was on 2170 East. And that was off the narrow road. And I couldn't figure out how come it was so narrow. When I rewrote the book for town and found out that grandpa gave Pason senior one ride right away up to the gravel pit. And I found out how come it was so narrow. Now, the road on 1300 East, there's part of it that owns half of the road on one side, and there's half of it that owns the road on the other side. I don't know whether it's ever been digged into the county or not. It's been used since I was a boy. But another problem you're gonna have is 1300 East is not a through street. It's a T junction on both ends. And there's irrigation ditch on both ends. And so, they've gotta work out. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Seeing none, do we wanna table this and refer it back to staff or later time? Or do you wanna make a decision? Do you want to...
I think we should table it and make that motion. We table it, continue it at a future date when we think it'll be ready to come back.
I know when we talked to the applicant, he said a month. But it really just depends on what they find and what adjustments they have to make to their plans. But we can work towards a month. And, you know, hope to have it back by that time. And I've taken note of the property owners that are here. And I can reach out to them by telephone or if I get an email and just let them know when that meeting is so they can get with their neighbors. It is a very tight-knit community in Haskellville area. So, I'm sure that if I reach out to a few of them, they can let their neighbors know and participate in that future meeting.
Okay, we've got a motion to table it. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mike?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. They will be tabled until further time, hopefully a month. Okay, next thing on the agenda is the final plat approval for the Springside Meadows. And I will turn that over to Jill.
Okay, I'm almost there.
Okay. So, Springside Meadows, I just have a short presentation with this. The applicant is just requesting final plat. I think we went through all of the preliminary plan issues at a meeting that you had last month. And so, I don't want to spend too much time on that. But as staff was going through the final plat, we really came down to, applicant's been very responsive to take care of all of the modifications to the project drawings and provide additional information to staff. But just for the public that is here that are not familiar with where Springside Meadows located. So, we're located, this is SR 198 headed to Spring Lake. This is the Spring Lake Elementary School. On the east side, you have the High Line Canal. And then you have a lot of farmland that's here in the middle. Salisbury Homes owns about 85 acres in that area that they have put together a large residential development that they will be completing in phases. And so, they have received some past approvals. They are doing this phase by phase. They are coming back for final plat approval of the next phase, which this shows the boundaries that Salisbury owns. And the phase that they're looking at this time is just to finish off the area between plots A, B, and C and the school. So, it's just this L-shaped parcel over here that they're looking at finishing off. There are 31 homes in that location. So, the current application, they have received preliminary plan approval. That was in May of this year. Final plat will be reviewed phase by phase. They have received a recommendation by the planning commission, which was included in the staff report. And then the city council doesn't need to make a decision. There are a couple of issues that do need to be included in the decision or the motion of the city council. A lot of those items, a lot of items can be taken care of at staff level, working one-on-one with the applicant. But there are some that do require attention by the city council. So, those are, the first is the housing product. The applicant is proposing that because they are, this development will be completed in neighborhoods, which this L-shaped parcel would just finalize the first neighborhood in the overall development. So, the applicant is proposing to have the housing product be consistent. So, what's in A, B, and C is gonna be continued through plot B. You know, as far as the elevations, the style of home. They are, he's also requesting that the materials, exterior materials be the same. So, it would be stucco with brick and stone elements on there. But the applicant is also requesting that engineered wood siding be an approved or an acceptable material in this neighborhood for this last plat. He, and I will have Mike DeMarco with Salisbury Homes provide a little bit more explanation on that. But they're looking at that being for more of an accent material. And that was actually included in the recommendation of the planning commission. Recreational vehicle storage with the preliminary plan, the motion of the city council is that recreational vehicle parking would be discussed on a phase-by-phase basis. And so, we are asking that with this. When we did not require recreational, a separate lot to be dedicated in the development for recreational vehicle parking for plots A, B, and C. So, the applicant is requesting this is the same neighborhood, just finishing off that L-shaped parcel without having the RV parking or a lot dedicated to RV parking. Fencing along Main Street has not been addressed with plots A, B, and C. And where we're at the last phase of, or the last plat of this area, we do need to address the fencing along Main Street. So, the proposal is just to install a six-foot tan vinyl, and I didn't finish my thought, along Main Street. The specific plan requires a six-foot vinyl with decorative columns or pillars. And, but some of the lot owners have already installed fencing for their backyard. And so, the applicant is just proposing to be, to have similar fencing to what the property owners have already had there. So, instead of doing the vinyl and the decorative pillars, just doing the vinyl to complete that section along Main Street, especially where some of those lot owners have already installed some fencing. And then, of course, the project drawing scene be consistent with city ordinance. And so, we will continue to work with the applicant to make sure.
But was the, was the other property owners, were they supposed to put the decorative?
So, let me, I've got a slide right here, Mayor, on the fencing. So, as you have probably noticed, as you drive Main Street, all the way along Main Street, we've had a couple of different materials that have been thrown in there along. Because we do require, because of the limited access, because it's an arterial road, we want to have that. So, we have, in East Hills, we have concrete. But all the way up through Saddle Brook, which really goes all the way from, you know, the north side of East Hills all the way up to the high school, the requirement was the vinyl with the decorative columns. And so, that was what was in that area. Through the improvement of Springside Meadows, we never really... It requires the vinyl with the pillars. But there's been a concern that has been raised by staff over the years of the damage that that vinyl fence is receiving from the weather and the snowplows. And so, there was a discussion of whether or not Pason City wanted to participate and maybe have a different material of fencing to help with the damage that may occur. We do not have that budget for. From a staff's opinion, is what is being proposed, is just to do the vinyl to finish this. If the council wanted to see a different type of material for the fencing for the other phases along Main Street and 2000 South, we can consider it at that time. But that is where we need some direction from the city council. Right now, there are four lots that have fencing. And the rest do not have any, and so that needs to be completed. So, right here where the nevo tap is for the gas line, it is the concrete. Then, these two lots south of there are tan or tan with white trim vinyl. Then, you have this lot here that has nothing. And then, this little corner of this lot here is white vinyl.
With all the different colors, I think it looks a little tacky driving down it.
Well, and that...
It's like parts to piece the whole thing.
And that is why we've gotta have a consistent, I mean, as we had up on Saddle Brook, you know, whether we like it or not, we were consistent with the white vinyl with the pillars. But where we've had some applicants or some property owners come in and put the fence in, do we just finish off something that is consistent with what is already there? But then again, as the mayor had mentioned, do we continue to have a consistent material and design all the way along that corridor so we're not having...
I'm gonna like the Kim Hancock's deal. I mean, that was one of his big deals. That's a big, you going up Main Street, you... It was entrance to the city. And I think that that was one thing, if I remember right, correct me if I'm wrong. We had...
A lot of discussion.
A lot of discussion on that road and a lot of discussion on those fences. And a lot of discussions...
And there's been a lot of modifications made. I mean, based on, I mean, those of you that were part of those discussions, Salisbury has gone to great lengths to have front Pason homes with the private access points. So, we're not having that tunnel effect because that was part of the concern as well. But for those areas that did need to be fenced, we did want it to be consistent. But again, the proposal is...
And you go back to the vinyl. I mean, it's like you say, you hit it with the snow, on the snowplow, and it's just, you're gone.
And that's, and that's why I put in your packet, the ordinance says that it has to be masonry unless otherwise it provides to the council. However, the specific plan for this property was vinyl fencing with the decorative pillars. The applicant is requesting that it just be the vinyl to finish off this section and then through the other phases for the rest of the corridor, that we put together something that would be very attractive and would be consistent throughout the remaining phases of the development. So, with that, I believe that is the last, yes. Because then we just have, the planning commission recommendation was to approve with conditions because we do have some preliminary plan conditions. Require the homes to be placed on the lots to accommodate on-site storage of RVs. Now, some of these lots are small, so they may not be able to. But we did want the home shifted to the non-marage side. So, there would be a possibility for RV pad at some point in the future if the owner needed that pad space. They wanted to require the housing product to be consistent with A, B, and C. Require the exterior materials to be consistent with those phases as well. But to also allow the engineered wood siding as an accent material. They didn't want the home to be completely constructed of that, but they wanted it to be an option for someone to provide some additional architectural element to the home. And then, to require the vinyl fencing with decorative columns. Mike Marco with Salisbury Homes is here. He may want to address this with the city council before you make a decision. And unless you have any questions specifically for me, we can turn some time over to Mike.
Okay. Turn some time over to him.
Mayor, council, thank you for having us. Jill covered it very well. Seems like the biggest hang-up here is this fence. I know we're in a bad position here. I have no knowledge of the fence. This is before my tenure. So, I think we've got seven houses up there. I drove by them on my way here again just to confirm. So, I didn't say the wrong numbers. But like Jill had mentioned, you know, the four that don't have fencing, one of them, they're working on the yard right now. The other three, we reached out and we got ahold of two of the homeowners. I'm not gonna say which, but one said, "Stay off my property, I don't want a fence." And the other one said, "I want white and tan to match what's up my sides," or something. So, of the ones that are completed, we got ahold of one, and he said, "Don't touch my fence." So, we're in a bad spot. I don't have a lot of, it's been several years since we put those in. It probably could and should have been handled previously. And like Jill's mentioning on these southern phases, if we need to discuss going to Rhino Rock or something of that nature, we would be happy to.
I guess my whole issue is, is it just looks scabby. You know what I mean?
And that's part of it.
It makes your whole development look scabby to me.
Three separate styles and colors.
Yeah, I mean, you're going from concrete to white to tan to tan, white to...
So, some of the owners are supposed to have a permit before building a fence?
Yes, they are.
So, they don't really have a say? They didn't follow code? I mean, that seems kind of harsh, but it makes it, if there were other places, that is our, that's a main corridor that people go up and down. It just looks cheap.
I guess one question I have is, since it's private property now, if they don't want a fence, is there really nothing we can do, is there?
I don't know.
We require by...
But we required it.
Wasn't that part of the agreement?
Part of the agreement, when we did it. They had to have a fence all the way down it.
Was that in there when they built the house in?
They were supposed to have them when they built the house. That was supposed to be a fence there, if I remember right. Because I remember Kim sat right over there, and he was very adamant on that fence. I remember, we talked about that road a lot. Because one of the things he wanted, I mean, he wanted a lot of stuff. I admit. I mean, he was... He was a little overboard on it. But I do admit, you know, that is a major road. And you gotta have it look consistent somewhat going up through there. And if you go all different kinds on a main, your main street, I just, I have an issue with it.
And Mayor, your suggestion, I mean, I don't want to keep putting off the fence issue because we are in the situation that we are now because we put it off. But where there are, they are, those lots are privately owned now, and Salisbury doesn't control them.
Well, and I realize they don't have any, but I mean, that's Pason City's problem.
The only lot in its next phase is just that one on, you know, the southeast corner. But maybe there's some arrangements made with whoever, I mean, you know, some understanding of whoever's finding that lot, that we're trying to work out the issues with.
I'd like to see what we're gonna go with. And at least go with like a rock, like the precast or something like that. But we're not gonna have to go back and...
But my suggestion is, where there's really only that one lot in this phase, maybe they move forward with the phase and maybe we meet with, maybe even staff and the developer. Maybe we reach out to those. I mean, I know that the applicant took the initiative to go out there and try to get some feedback. But maybe as staff, maybe we need to reach out to those residents also and provide a little bit of history, you know, of what was required. And have that discussion and see if...
I'd like to see somehow that we could work it out so we could at least get something to look... I wouldn't even mind going vinyl to the corner if that's what we had to do to make it look proportionate or the same.
The corner is consistent.
But when you're going... But, but when you're going from decorative concrete to vinyl, one color, to vinyl another color, to vinyl another color, or whatever, I mean, that just, it looks tacky. I mean, it looks like we're just playing playground down there, and whatever goes, goes.
And the recommendation back to you, maybe we're just going to go, you know, our recommendation based on what we've heard from the residents, is we're just going to do vinyl from this point to this point. But maybe, you know, we don't have the residents-
But then the residents, maybe we'll have to look at them and say, but if the plows come through and it wipes out your fence, you're responsible for it. How long? I don't know how we've got all of that. If it, if we're doing, have we got the, we got the concrete the rest of the way up there? Or is that all vinyl?
Well, just, just East Hill, just the subdivision immediately north, and then after that, it is the vinyl again with the decorative columns.
Is it?
But that was part of the concern, is we've seen some damage and some things that have been occurring with that vinyl, and so it's, we need to maybe rethink it.
If you go through the minutes, there was a lot of discussion on that.
You are correct.
Way back when.
One, one thing maybe to get a little consistency, we aren't going to get a lot, but if you go to decorative concrete and go down, you got the vinyl and tan, and then you got space, and I'm guessing that's the people who want to match, and then you got the little white, you could put vinyl and tan, and put vinyl and tan on, on the new lot. So at least you'd have that whole corridor up to the decorative concrete all, all the same.
And from the decorative concrete and north, there's nothing.
Right, right. So, so we get that one piece all, all the same?
I'm good, as long as it doesn't look like it's patched and pieced. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
And I understand.
And right now, just looking at that, it looks like, let's go out and just do whatever we want to do. And, and I guess it probably wouldn't be that big of an issue, but I do know in past council meetings, that has been a, a major issue, and I thought we were pretty clear on a lot of that stuff. And so I don't know how it's cut to this point.
I don't either. I'm hoping we can resolve it.
Oh, yeah, that's, whether that's been the city's fault and not staying with it, or whether that's been developers or whatever, but that's something we need to stay on top of. So I, I don't know how everybody else does. That's just my, I said way too soon.
I agree with the mayor, but we really want to have it consistent, and it doesn't look, it looks like, say, it looks tacky.
Well, yeah. I mean, and even, even now, you know, you're still going to look like it's going to be a spot that's going to be different than the rest. So I don't know. I, I guess let's staff work it through, but-
But I was just making that recommendation, if really the only issue is, is the fencing, those plots have already been developed, I would hate to see the app could be held up to finish off this phase.
Right, and I don't think it should be held up for the fencing, but I still think that something needs to be-
Right.
Decided on what, and I guess tonight, we need to figure out what, what we're going to expect there on them fences, and, and make sure that that gets carried through. And then, and then my, I'm just saying, we ought to direct staff to go back and talk with the other homeowners or whatever, and see what we can do to make that so it looks not like we're, we just built Trash Villes USA and whatever. Not that we did or anything, but it just looks a little tacky on the main road.
We just need to finish off.
It just needs to be finished, and it looks good.
So I thought in our planning, we had decided that they were going to have the decorative concrete and then the vinyl between it. Jill? Yeah? The planning commission recommended, as I had on the previous slide, that they wanted to see the decorative pillars. But I know that the applicant, that applicant's just proposing to just do the vinyl for that section. But yes, the planning commission's recommendation as Commissioner Hyatt had just mentioned-
Well, and again, you put the decorative pillars, and whether the other homeowners do it or not, I mean, it's, you're back to the same thing. You're at decorative concrete, and you're back to a white tan vinyl and a white vinyl, and then you're back to decorative again. I guess that's my issue on the whole thing. And, and I know it's not Salisbury's problem, but it should have been addressed all the way along, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And we need to make sure that it, it doesn't happen. We stay with the consistency along that road, at least for that. And so, here's my thought.
So my question is, if we have codes in place, and somebody doesn't follow the code, do we just let it keep going in perpetuity so that nobody follows codes?
Well, and I think that's where, I mean, if it was the-
Like, that's my concern.
Yeah.
Like, if, if that was part of their agreed contract, and they didn't do it, they have an obligation privately, not, not with Salisbury, but they've got a private obligation that they agreed to when they bought the property. To me, that they have contractually agreed to. Now, if we didn't put that in place, then they're absolutely right. Like, if they don't want to put in a fence, they don't put in a fence, right? But we need to look at the code, and then we need to make sure we're doing our code enforcement. And, and I know that's hard, like, there's, there's millions of things going on in the house. Everybody's building the fence and the shed and everything else without, without, without doing it the right way a lot of times. However, when you're on the main corridor, you get singled out.
But I think given, given direction to this, to the staff, to put that information together before we meet with the residents. I mean, I'm hoping that with the residents and the developer and our, you know, the staff in the room, hopefully we can come up with a solution that everybody-
And I, what I'd like to see is going back through the minutes and see what we did have in previous, because I do know that that was addressed with fencing-
With previous proposals.
We done a lot of fencing, we done a lot of lighting, we done a lot of, oh, those were the main things we went over. I remember, like, different ways the sidewalks went and everything else. But I know that the fencing was one of the major deals, and I know, I know as short as I'm sitting here, Kim was a big proponent on that being the same, wasn't he? Yeah, so I just want to make sure that my mind's working right here, but yeah.
My mind's right.
And it's just not, it just doesn't seem like it carried through.
You've got two things operating. You've got the existing code that requires them to come in and get a permit if they're going to put a fence up. So if they haven't done that, then there's a violation of that. But what, when he talks about a detailed subdivision, then it's the development agreement that's actually filed against the property, and if we go back to that. So you've got the code that talks about coming to get a permit, and one of the reasons that we have them coming to get a permit is so that we can go look at the, the agreement and say, this is what you can put in, because this is what is filed against your property. And then, and so with some research by staff, we can come up with, with, I think, some solutions that would help us to-
My, my deal would be-
Clean up as much as we can.
Is to say, and I, and this is just me throwing it out, let them approve the final plat with the conditions that staff work out the fencing, and work it out to what we were going to do originally, and do everything the same, or-
Right. Then, or we can come back to you with it.
I, I don't think we need to hold off the development, right, for-
And we could bring just the fencing issue back to you, once we gather that information and have, have met with the residents.
But it needs to be addressed.
I agree.
Jill, is Salisbury willing to do that type of fence, or do they want something different?
Well, their proposal for this section, and mainly because some of the residents have already put up fencing, is just to continue the vinyl.
The vinyl, okay.
So, yeah, you might have some different shades. I mean, they, they had mentioned doing, you know, the tan vinyl, because with the exception of that southern lot, they're tan. I mean, one has white trim around it, but just, just to finish off that section and try to make it as consistent as possible, just doing the vinyl.
Right.
But again-
Well, can we hold that off and then see what we can work out through there, and then, so we're not doing everything two and three times again? We just do it one time, it's done.
So we could talk-
We're not going to hold them up.
Right.
I mean, they're not going to get on the fence. I'm sure it's probably going to be next spring before they even look at the fence, so, uh, right there, but-
Yeah, and it could be. And, I mean, and we could look at the whole corridor. I mean, maybe it is a different material for this section, but then they can provide, as Mr. Marco had mentioned, of, but this is what we'll do on the remainder of the corridor.
We just need to work, sort of the problem is what we need to do.
Absolutely, yeah. So I, I do agree to, to move the final plat forward, so we can get the improvements done and start building homes, but, but still-
But that-
Keep the fencing issue on the table, so we can resolve it.
Needs to be put down, that we do need that fired up.
Yes, okay. Did you have any comments on any of the other items?
Oh, unless you want to talk about the LP.
Did you guys have any question on the LP siding, on the engineered wood siding?
I think as long as it's just decorative.
Okay.
How long does it last? Does it get a pretty good life? I just look it up, and it looks nice, but-
Forever.
Okay.
You can submerge it in a bucket of water and leave it for months. It's got a concrete base to it, so it doesn't absorb water. So my house is made out of it, it's nice enough. Lock it, it's ducted.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? Or do we have a motion?
I guess as a reminder, the left-hand column there is the recommendation of the planning commission. They did go through each of the items that staff had included in your packet.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the final plat approval for the Springside Meadows subdivision plat D, with the recommendations of the planning commission, except for remand back to staff to come up with a solution for the vinyl fencing.
Or fencing. I don't know if we want to-
Well, okay, you're right. You're, you're correct. Well, fencing, with the fencing.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Is he done? Mike?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing is a resolution, resolution on the development agreement for the depot.
So Mayor and City Council on this, and the applicant is not here. They actually have to travel from Leighton. So I figured where it was, they were just minor modifications to the development agreement. I guess I took the, I am taking the risk that you're not going to have any questions for the developer. So anyway, saving them a trip to and from Leighton. But they are proposing, the city council has approved the development agreement for the apartments at the depot. It's a 168-unit apartment complex that's located at 900 North and 400 West here in Payson, so it's located just west of the Westlake Veterinary Hospital, just, and the bowling alley, just to orient everybody. But the applicant has completed another or a final review of the development agreement before they move forward on the project, and there were a couple of things that they wanted to see changed. The first one is, is Destination Homes has created a subsidiary of Destination Homes called Ever Sage Partners, and so they want the development agreement between Ever Sage Partners and Payson City, not Destination Homes and, and Payson City. They are also wanting to add language regarding the timing of installation of the landscaping for the final phase of the project, because we do indicate that no occupancy permits. So we're going to be very flexible through all of the phases, because they're going to be, have some, a variety of phasing of when the, the structure is going to be built, when the amenities are going to be put in. We've been very flexible in the development of when those will be done, but we do want to make sure that there is a deadline in the development agreement of when those amenities have to be provided to those living in this apartment complex. And so we had indicated that no certificate of occupancies will be issued for any units in those last two buildings until the landscaping is completed and those amenities. The concern, the, the applicant has had the concern with the amenities, because they've indicated most of the amenities are going to be done in, in the, you know, the beginning stages of this project. But they felt like if they get that building done in the winter, they still want to be able to get some certificate of occupancies, and so they wanted to make some modifications to that, that do the inclement weather. We already have this mechanism in our ordinance, but they felt strongly that it be included in the development agreement as well, even though it's in city ordinance. Whether or not they were concerned that city ordinance could change, but they did want that language in there about inclement weather, that if it is in the middle of winter and they have no other option, that they could get some certificate of occupancies. Now, as a side note, just, this is something that we do internally as staff, we do require that there be a bond in place. If we ever make an exception, we do need to make sure that there is money bonded to ensure the installation of those amenities or the landscaping. So that is something that we would make sure as staff, that if they were, if, if everything fell into the case that this happened in the wintertime, we would make sure that there was a bond in place as well to incentivize the applicant to get that landscaping done as quickly as possible once spring has sprung, so. Anyway, so, and then the last one is modify the type of perimeter fence. And the applicant had provided a letter in your packet of the reason and the justification he felt for modifying the type of fence. Around the perimeter of the development, they were proposing the rhino fence, so it's more of a masonry fence around the perimeter. They felt like a modification of that perimeter fence would give them more of an opportunity to provide more amenities or higher quality amenities within the development, if they could save some of the money on the perimeter fencing. So instead of doing the rhino fence around the perimeter, they are proposing to do a six-foot tall vinyl fence, but with the cultured stone veneer columns. And I want to say on the planets, 80 foot on center, so every 80 feet, they would have a decorative column that would be materials consistent with the structures in the development. And so, again, they are asking for modification of the fencing to allow for additional amenities or quality of amenities in the development.
So how is that going to work with the slow, the snowplow issue we just discussed?
The perimeter fence on this, they do not have any fencing along the road.
Okay.
So it is just on the northeast and south side, which would be adjacent to other commercial development in the future, but no roads. So I appreciate that, that question, but we wouldn't have a road issue with this particular project.
Now, they've talked about having better amenities. Have they quantified what that is?
I don't think he did in his, in his-
Or is this just a way to get around?
Well, when if, if you guys can recall the amenity package that they put together for this development, it's pretty significant. You know, anything from their pool to their clubhouse, you know, it's a much larger clubhouse than is required by ordinance. They continue the theme, the depot theme throughout the development. They put more playgrounds in that was required by ordinance, so they have, as, in staff's opinion, we feel like they've gone above and beyond what the minimum requirements of the ordinance are. And so that's, I think, another reason they're asking for this concession of, hey, we've put more effort into the amenities for the residents of this development. We feel like that's more of a benefit than perimeter fencing. That's going to be just adjacent to, you know, a commercial project or-
So there really isn't going to be no change with the amenities?
No, well, no.
I just want to make sure that's clear.
Right. Not that I am aware of. He did not include that in, in the write-up that was included in your packet. I, I do truly believe that it was a cost issue, and they're trying to see if, you know, how can we, do we need to scale back the amenities, which they could scale back the amenities if it was a cost issue, because they're only required to, from a city requirement standpoint, they're only required to require this. And they've increased the, the types and the amount of amenities. So I guess if the rhino fence were required, they just may need that internal decision to, to scale back on some of those amenities that weren't necessarily required.
So Jill, does staff recommend making this change?
Staff is supportive of the change.
Do we have any other discussion or a motion?
I'll make, if nobody else wants to, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 0906217, authorize and authorize the mayor to sign to execute the amendment to the development agreement between Payson City and Destination Homes.
Okay. We have a motion?
Only with Ever Sage.
Ever Sage, yes.
Yes. Instead of Destination.
Well, that's part of the proposed change, so. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. The next item is the resolution, she already took care of it, with the library board. So the next one would be the resolution adopting Payson City 40-year water rights plan.
Mayor, council, this was on your agenda last time it was table. I apologize I was not here, and a couple of people were not here to answer some of the questions. I have talked to the consultant, Jim Rye, the engineering. What this document is, is it's required by the state if we are, if we want to, many times on our water rights, if we're not currently using that, but it's for the future growth if we're not currently using that, but it's for the future growth or future use of the city, we have to get extensions of that water right, or if we receive new water rights, we have to put it in our wells. And so, he created this document for the 40-year plan. As you can see in there, it talks about build-out based on the Governor's Office of Economic Development, projections of our growth. We're gonna need about 18,000 acre-feet of water. We currently have 8,000. So, and we do require water when people come in, but he put this with blanks in on purpose so that whenever we have a water right that, we get some every year, says this water right's coming up on the end of its time to put it to beneficial use, if you can file for an extension. But he put those blanks on purpose, so you could put that water right in that, attach this document to the request for extension, and send it in with that, so that the state knows we do have a 40-year plan. We're putting it for a specific water right, and hopefully that will help get the extension and the approvals to keep the water in our name for future growth. So, that was the reason for the blanks throughout the document. It was on purpose to put it as a, that you could use it as part of your application, so... I apologize, I wasn't clear before when it came on, but it is a good document for us to meet the state compliance. I think Jim Rodney's a good water engineer. He's helped us on several things. We've already signed some of the change applications that have lapsed, and we're getting that through the process so that we can recover that water and keep it in our system, so... Unless you have any other questions, we recommend that you approve the 40-year plan, and we can move forward with securing our water rights for the future growth in the city.
Okay, do we have any discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 09062017, adopting the Payson City's 40-year water rights plan.
Okay, got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Mike?
Aye.
Sorry?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next thing is a resolution for the first right of refusal agreement between Payson City LLC and the Fort Bay property.
Okay, Mayor, Council, this is a, a year or so ago, the council, in a public hearing, declared certain property surplus, so that we could look at selling that, marketing it. Through that process, we have been working with Payson Properties LLC in an attempt to purchase. They have been willing to purchase it. They've also been willing to look at preserving that, keeping it preserved, and maybe moving that back to the city. We haven't been able to come to an agreement because the appraisal and what we owe on that, but, and so, this agreement, basically, we can continue to market that property to anybody we want to, but this agreement is, Payson Properties would like a first right of refusal. If we get a third-party offer to purchase that property, we give them a right to purchase that at the price that we have available. Our hope is that we can continue to look at what we do with that property, but in the meantime, we can use some of the, what they pay for the first right of refusal to help some of our bond payment, and hopefully we can come to some terms so that we can preserve that and keep it, my understanding from the councils, they want to preserve that if we could, and hopefully get that back in the city's name with a conservation easement, so that it can be preserved for years. Like, I don't think the first right of refusal does anything to stop us from going out and continuing to market that property or look at other options, but it does give them a right, if we come up with an offer, that they could have a decision to purchase that at that price as well, so that's what the first right of refusal does. As our state, he is here representing Payson Properties, if you have any questions for him as well.
Any discussion?
I wish it was a done deal, but I'm excited. I think this is a good step for both sides. It does allow us some flexibility if something comes in. I've said all along and continue to say that I think that Fort Bay is a great asset to the community, and I just wanna reiterate that. I think it ties into the branding that we've talked about, and we can do some great things. And hopefully, we can open it up a little bit for better access. We've talked about that. And like to see that happen and continue to move towards that, so more people can hike the trails and camp, picnic, whatever. But I think it's a good agreement.
I think that I would like with Doug is to see that opened up more. If we have this asset, we need to make it available for the public to build it. So, I think maybe we even look at some of this money to...
Some improvements.
To improvements and access and things like that.
Right.
But I think it's a good first step to try and resolve two different problems. One, preserving, and one is our budget cuts, so I'm, thanks for all of the work everybody did on there.
Yeah, I'm also feel good about this agreement. I think it's a good step forward.
Okay, does anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll move. We approve resolution 09062017, approving the first right of refusal agreement between Payson Properties LLC and Payson City Corporation.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Mike?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is the discussion regarding the potential amateur Golden Gloves boxing event. And I think, I don't see Aaron, so...
What is it all about?
I guess I'll just kinda go through what I know about it. I don't know if any of you know that Aaron, his son with Unbreakable, is the world, well, USA champion for MMA for the US Junior Olympics. And so, we have a junior Olympian that is number one in the country, and with the Golden Gloves in boxing. And Aaron would like to see if he could use the city center to host a junior Golden Gloves event. There's a, if the rings in the, city center's had a ring up in the centering there. I think that's what he was, that's what he was asking for, plus an in-home.
I don't think it'd do any harm.
Yeah, I'm a little like addict going forward.
Well, I look at, you know, last, what was it, last week or the weekend before, they had that boxing match, and they paid 30 million to, what's his name?
Just to get in, or he had Conor McGregor to come and...
Yeah, and grace our stage. I mean, I look at, I look at the money that that sport has, it's, well, it's always been a big sport, money-wise, but we have, we have a great opportunity, I think, with just the popularity of where his son is right now. Both of his sons are great athletes.
And I think also, it wasn't this year, I don't know if it was this, it wasn't this year. If it was last year and the year before that on Labor Day, they had rings set up down there, and there was a lot of interest, and a lot of kids participate in that, so I think it would be great.
Are you going to charge entrance when they have the boxing match, or...
I would imagine they would. They've still gotta bring in professionals, and it's, everything's gotta be regulated pretty close, and you still got police and everything else, so...
Yeah, it's just gonna be youth, is all it would be. It wouldn't be...
Only kids can box.
Yeah, it would just be the youth, Golden Gloves, is all it would be. So, I know he's been talking with Carl on a few, doing some classes with the community, and teaching some boxing, stuff like that, but...
Are they doing rental for it, or are they just giving it up for one event, or 10 events, or...
I, what I take, right now, I think he just wants to look at one or two events, and just, you know, see how the field is in the area, and see how much participation they get.
Is this a community event, or are they charging, or are they raising money, or what?
I think that they would probably charge, and I don't know if that would be...
I think they're charging to recharge the rental.
Charging, yeah. And I don't, I don't know how that would all work with Aaron's deal, as far as, I'm sure he's gonna have to have so much for prizes or whatever, and I'm sure going through Golden Gloves, they're gonna have so much. So, I'm not really sure on all of that, whether he would put it on as a free, him not taking in profits or whatever. I wish he was here to talk to him about that, but, 'cause I'm not sure where he's at there. But I know that he wants to spark the, you know, see how much you could, get people in, and the kids and everything else, which I know boxing used to be a big deal around here, and it's, well, when I was a kid, but it is kinda went out of...
Boxing on the trampoline.
But it's starting to come back, so I don't know.
Do you think it might be a good idea, if you could get with Aaron, and maybe get proposals of what dates he wants to do it, and some of the details, and we can bring it back and let him approve it?
I think it'd be great.
Some of the curls go.
Just, when we rent out our fields or other things, we have them provide a limited liability insurance. So, I think a rental with that would be appropriate. And then also, probably, I don't know what the fire code is on the number of people in that room. We probably oughta look at some...
The room would have a number capacity, and things like that. And I think that's the type of detail that he needs to know, so that he recognizes that it can't be anything greater than what the capacity is and right now.
Well, if he just rents it, I don't even think the reason to come back to council is there.
If you guys are okay with it, we just need to schedule the time to get...
Well, I think, I think he just wants to make sure it was good with council.
So, do we need to provide direction, or have you got direction?
It's on the agenda. If you wanna make a motion that you're okay with having an event here, we can work out the details with Mayor and Mr. Garcia.
I'm all right with an event or two.
So, is that a motion, or...
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve that he can have an event or several and work it out with staff.
It has direction. I don't say that.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Mike?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Mayor, if I could go back to the last slide and give you my issue, the scheduling on that first right of refusal, it had a payment scheduled, four payments. One was September 1st, that's passed. I wonder if the council's okay just moving that down one month, so the first payment would be October 1st, November, December, and January.
Any problem with that? Okay.
So, do you need it, okay?
Do we need a motion?
I think we would make a motion, just that we would amend that scheduling.
I'll move that I made. I made the motion, didn't I?
Yeah.
No, so I just amended...
I'll redo my second.
Okay, all, well, Mike?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right. All right, next thing on the agenda. Do we have a motion to go into RDA? So, moved, second. We got a motion, second, to go into redevelopment agency. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pulsed. We're now into RDA. A motion to go into a public hearing. So moved, second?
I'll second that.
Here, we got a motion by Doug, second by Linda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pulsed. Okay, we're now into a public hearing on the sale of a portion of, well, let's go to the budget approval. Let's do the budget approval first.
Okay.
For the...
So, on the budget?
For the, yeah, number one, for the budget approval.
Okay, on the budget, you had, we had the public hearing on the budget amendments. The last one was for the road carryover for the RDA, so that just needs to, you need to adopt a resolution approving that carryover of the RDA budget of the road.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so do we have anybody in the public that would like to come up and address? Seeing none? Do we have a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second. We got a motion and a second to go out of public hearing. Second right here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pulsed. Okay, do we have any discussion on that, or a motion to approve it?
Who made that motion, Welton seconded it?
No, first, I was second. Mike made the motion, Doug made the second.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget amendment for the RDA.
Okay, got a motion by Councilman Hewlett?
I'll second that.
Okay, and we got a second. Any other discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion is approved. Do we have, did we go out of closed session?
We haven't been in a closed session.
I mean, I mean, not closed session. Did we go out of public hearing?
Yeah, you did.
We did, okay, all right. Now, we have the other approved sell, of a portion, of a parcel, we was asked to make a motion to put that, motion to table that, so...
Mayor, if you're okay, we can do it like we did the Ashley estate. If you wanna make a motion to go into public, to a public hearing?
Public hearing, again?
And then, if there's anybody here to speak on that.
Okay.
And then I'll explain the issues on it.
So, do we have a motion to go into public hearing again?
So moved.
So moved.
I'll second.
And a second. Councilwoman Carter got the second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pulsed. Okay, we're now in the public hearing again on the approving the sale of a portion of a parcel,
Mayor, Council, under state law and under our current ordinance, if we have any property over an acre that's proposed for sale, we have to have a public hearing, let the public weigh in on that. So, we noticed this for tonight. It was my mistake. The notice was a seven-day notice. The notice needed to be a 14-day notice, so the notice was defective. And so, we kept it on the agenda because it was noticed in the paper, in case anybody came. So, if anybody's here to talk about it, but what I would ask is that we table this, because we have to have the public hearing after a 14-day notice, so it actually came out in the paper today, and it'll be addressed on the 20th. But I wanted to leave it on the agenda in case somebody saw the notice that came out last week for tonight. And we can take any public comment if you'd like, but I would recommend that we table that until the 20th, when we've had the proper 14-day notice to hold the hearing.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to address it? Seeing none? Do we have a motion to...
Close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Or do we wanna close the public hearing, or do we wanna table it?
Well, it's already been re-noticed. We already put it in the paper, so I think you might just...
Can we dispose it? Okay, so we got a motion. Who made the motion? Doug made a motion.
I second.
Brian seconded it. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pulsed. Okay, we're now out of public hearing.
Now, if you just make a motion to table this item, and we'll continue, we'll readdress it on the 20th.
I make a motion that we continue this on the 20th council meeting to address. And table it.
Okay, so we have a motion to table this until the 20th, and bring it back up into RDA again?
Yep.
Not council, RDA.
RDA, excuse me.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Mike?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Now, Mayor, before you go out of the RDA, I would ask that we convene into a closed session to talk about the sale of some real property that deals with the RDA, before we go out of the RDA, and then we can come back.
Okay, so do we have a motion to go into closed session for RDA?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pulsed. Okay, we will meet back here in five minutes.